Item, agenda item number one called, uh, number two. This is gonna be a good night. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, rules of order. The Elsworth City Council operates under Robert's Rules of Order, except for those items that are added or subtracted at our November organizational meeting each year. Number four, adoption of the Elsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, August 19th, 2024, regular meeting and the August 26th, 2024, emergency meeting.
Move to adopt. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? And I also might add, all of the council members are here. Charlie is out this evening for a family event. So he'll be back next time. All right, item five, presentation of awards. Amanda Ray. Is yours? Go second, got the wrong one. Fifty-fifty chance. Come on up.
The City of Ellsworth proudly presents the Certificate of Service to Amanda Ray in recognition of your five years of service as a utilities clerk for the City of Ellsworth. A devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth. Presented the sixteenth day of September. Congratulations.
We have a second one for Brian Luce. For five years with the water department. He's unable to attend tonight, but we'll make sure that he can. Okay, City Manager's Report. I am going to read this for Charlie. It's a little bit lengthy, but it's a good, it's good. Very informative. Infrastructure planning. He says, as we discussed during the budget cycle, several key infrastructure investments were left out in order to explore longer-term bonding options, particularly for road projects. Drawing from prior Ellsworth infrastructure plans and best practices from other municipalities, we aim to chart a sustainable path forward. We are developing a one, five, and 10-year infrastructure plan to present a comprehensive view of the city's needs. In the short term, my priority is identifying key projects for the coming year that warrant immediate funding through band bond options. At the September 27th Friday Finance Committee meeting, we will present the initial list of infrastructure priorities to the council, along with a finance memo outlining our bonding capacity. These discussions will continue at upcoming Finance Committee meetings, culminating in a potential vote during the October council meeting to authorize funding for select projects. The courthouse. We have received 10 proposals related to alternative locations for the courthouse project, which are under review. I would also like to note that the state has issued an RFP for an architect applicable whether the courthouse remains at the survey location or moves to an alternative site. So this is just for the building, no matter where they put it. Community workshop is being scheduled for Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM, where we will review the submitted applications with the council and open the floor for citizen input. Prior to that meeting, we will make public, the property submission information so that citizens have time to review and provide their thoughts. At this workshop, we'll also hope to better outline next steps for the process of decision-making timelines. We are grateful to the Maine judiciary for their continued commitment to this project, prioritizing both Ellsworth and Hancock County. Six-month performance review. At my request, the city council will be going into executive session this evening to discuss my performance over the last six months. This is an opportunity for me to receive constructive feedback on what is working well, what can be improved in any areas that require more attention. Setting clear goals and metrics is essential, as is accountability for achieving results. Without this feedback, it's difficult to adjust course effectively. Which I sent everyone an email about this. I've felt a great deal of support from the community, the council, and staff over these past six months, and I'm eager to continue working toward our shared goals for Ellsworth. I don't think I've ever had a job where I felt as much of an opportunity every day to make a difference in my community, and I'm grateful for this role, and I'm extremely excited for the good works we'll accomplish together over the next six months. Maine Organics. We are waiting feedback from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding scheduling a workshop on smell mitigation options at Maine Organics. Our team is also visiting other composting facilities across the state to gather insights into additional mitigation strategies. After a workshop on these options, I plan to hold a follow-up session with the residents most affected by the smell. Following that, the council and potentially our legal team will convene to discuss next steps and determine whether this issue should be added to the council meeting agenda for formal discussion with potential action options. Seven Fairground Lane, dangerous building designation. Following the dangerous building designation by the council, our teams continue to explore options to address the situation. As mentioned previously, we are open to working with the property owners if they can secure financing and contractors for the necessary repairs. We've had some communication with the family, but nothing definitive has been arranged yet. At the next council meeting, we will present a more detailed report from the code enforcement team outlining potential next steps, including cost estimates and processes for either moving forward with the family or pursuing demolition if necessary. Unsung Heroes. You may have noticed a new office being constructed in our front office area. We are bringing the utilities coordinator position back from the wastewater treatment plant to City Hall, which will improve customer service in our billing department. Special thanks to Jim McLean, our facilities director, who built the office from scratch. His craftsmanship saved the city money, and we are fortunate to have such a skilled and dedicated professional on our team. It's tax bill season, and I want to recognize our front office staff for their hard work in processing payments. I've received glowing feedback about our deputy tax collectors, Ginny and Big Jim, for their outstanding customer service and helping residents navigate the process. We are lucky to have such a dedicated team. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions? It was lengthy, but there's some really great stuff in here, right? Yes. Great. Okay. Committee reports. Casey?
On Thursday, this Thursday, the 19th, the Arbor Commission is holding a special workshop at the University of Maine Extension and also on Zoom at 3 o'clock about Beech Leaf Disease. So if anyone's interested, the city's Facebook page and the city website notices there's a link. So which is Beech Leaf Disease, which I don't, can't tell you anything about other than that it is actually sweeping through the area. So if you have a lot of beech trees, you might want to watch.
Oh. Any other committee reports? Congressman?
I have something from the Historic Preservation Commission. They are updating the ordinance, their ordinance primarily to be in compliance with state recommendations to align with becoming a certified local government through the National Park Service. The value of being a CLG is that Ellsworth is demonstrating our interest in preserving, protecting, and enhancing our unique cultural historic assets. This will not increase the rules of property compliance, but it will clarify the commission's process in fulfilling this role. The benefits of earning this designation will be increased access to funding, including sub grants from the State Commission of National Park Service funding, as well as some grants that are available only to certified local governments. There's also direct access to state Historic Preservation Commission technical assistance and training. And in the bigger picture, the value is the sustainability of the community, that there are generally higher property values, better walkability, and a greater sense of community that comes with this work. Their meeting next is tomorrow, Tuesday, where the draft ordinance will be reviewed. I expect that it'll probably come to the council for consideration in October. So a heads up that that's happening. I also want to note, in my day job, I get newsletters from the Maine Association of Planners and didn't know if others were aware that at their annual meeting for their 2024 annual awards, Citizen Planner of the Year was awarded to Richard Lyles of Ellsworth. So this is a pretty cool thing that I thought we're sharing as well while we were giving updates.
This draft ordinance, has this gone through planning, the planning office or anything to, for vetting? You've been working on it?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Okay.
I was gonna say Jen is here if there are more specific, the chair of the commission is here if there are more specific questions. Hi Jen.
I just think that before it comes to the council, it should be vetted by staff.
Yeah. We have our secretary, like we make notes, and then we have the secretary go through the ordinance and apply the notes.
Can you, do you mind? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just as long as, it just shouldn't come to us until staff has let that out.
I agree.
Tammy, if I may, on the Finance Committee, just an update?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So the, under the great leadership of our chair, Tammy Moat, and our, no, in all seriousness, the Finance Team, as we all know, has really done a lot of work in the last six months under, with Charlie and Nate, and the whole group's really working hard. And they've made a lot of strides. And now, the second Friday of every month, we're calling it Freaky Friday, but we are going through the, it's kind of a real-time analysis of the city's financials, which was not available for some time for the city, using the new software. And we're gonna be publishing a report once a month, which will be available to all citizens or anyone. It'll be on the website. But if anyone in the community has an interest in the city's finances, or staff, or other counselors, if you want to get up at 8:00 on the Friday and come hang out with us, there's a, it's just a great way to understand how that we've gone through the budget process with kind of our new system, where the city's finances are at and a good time to ask questions. And, but I say all that in primarily also to say thank you to the Finance Team for all the hard work. They've been, everyone at the city's been working hard, but the Finance Team has done really great work, and there's a lot of good information there.
Any other reports?
Just a quick update for the ongoing saga of broadband fiber and other connectivity, especially up in the Graham Lake area. I mentioned this a few months back. We had some citizens up in that area who were having issues connecting and thought that they would be able to access fiber through Fidium, and that work never, never ended up getting done. We just learned through some of the research done by Economic Development Department in the city and some other former counselors apparently who've been calling up and sharing information, is that though Riva Net did have that area as described as being connected with fiber on their map, that was actually an error. So the city discovered that was displayed as connected incorrectly, and it actually isn't connected. The importance there is that the connection displayed on the map disqualified that area from receiving B grant funds. So they're working on fixing the maps so that they can then apply for grant funds, which would hopefully allow connectivity in that area. There's some other weird things like grandfathered something with previous connection services there that aren't allowing these new services to then connect to the area, but that's a bit beyond my pay grade.
Anything else? We will go to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for any of the citizens of Ellsworth to come to the podium and speak on anything they'd like. Do ask, if it's an agenda item, to please wait until that agenda item before commenting. We will allow you to have time. John's gonna make sure that I do that this time. Would anyone like to speak?
Hi, I'm Zabet, program coordinator for Heart of Ellsworth, and I just wanted to invite you guys, October 4th through 6th, is the Maine Craft Weekend, Art of Ellsworth Maine Craft Weekend. It's a statewide, statewide event, basically around the state of Maine. There are a bunch of art workshops, tours, demonstrations, and Ellsworth is a featured city. So we have several events happening within Ellsworth. You can see them on our website, also on our Facebook page. But we're really excited, The Grand is participating, ECMI, Eastern, Ellsworth Community Music Institute, Artsworth, and there's a bunch, bunch of others. But namely, I would say that we, our featured event is actually gonna be on Friday, and it's gonna be a, the Open Studios and Ribbon Cutting Ceremony at our new Maker Space on 16 State Street. And that will be at 5:00 PM. And then it will be followed by a show by the Ellsworth High School art students. The theme of the show is "The Life of the River", and we're really excited that they are gonna be opening this Maker Space, and we hope that the whole community will come and support them. So, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I'm John Linderhand, 157 Shore Road in Ellsworth. I'm here to announce officially, I'm running for the Elsworth City Council, and I want to tell you the main reason why. I'm running on a very simple platform. It's gonna be to reduce Ellsworth property taxes. I've got a spreadsheet I put together on my own taxes. I've looked at other people's taxes here in Ellsworth as well, but I don't want to use other people's names, so I'm just gonna use my own tax base. In 2021, my taxes on my home were $9,268.63. In 2025, my taxes were $14,441.62. That's an increase of $5,172.99 in just four years. That's 55% increase in only four years. That's an average property tax increase of 13.9% annually. That is way too much, and the buck stops for the city council. So I have a simple four-word campaign platform that I'm gonna announce tonight. Reduce Ellsworth property taxes. And I promise I will vote no on any council area that comes up that will increase our taxes. And I'm really upset with the tax situation here in Ellsworth. I've had many people mention to me, how's your tax bill this year? And I looked it up, you know, I just, just got it in, and I was doing some figuring, so that's why I put a spreadsheet together, so I know exactly what it was. I was shocked, to be honest with you. My wife pays the bills in my house, so I, you know, don't really look that close at the taxes. She takes care of that stuff. But when I looked at it, and I showed her, and she said, well, I told you it was going up a lot like that. And I said, well, yeah, but you didn't tell me it'd gone up 55% in four years. That's unaffordable for most of the people here in our community. And I'm assuming that most people are in that same category. I reviewed a couple people that asked me about it, and I looked at their own personal thing. I don't want to bring up other people's names at this meeting, but their taxes went up similar, or if not more even, some people over the last couple of years. So I think we near and then did a strong look at the spending. I believe everything revolves around spending. Two things, we can expand the tax base here in Ellsworth, but it won't do a bit of good if we don't get a fair tale of the spending here in the city. I believe as a council, we've spent too much money, and I'm not saying there are good projects, but we can spend more than we can afford. And I think that's where we are in the City of Ellsworth. So again, I'm happy to be running for the City of Ellsworth. I've watched a lot of your votes over the last several months. And other than Steve O'Halloran, I think most everybody hasn't really had what I'd say, I could say, well, the confidence. Most of the time, not all the time, which I'm disappointed, but most of the time, Steve has voted no on stuff that would increase taxes. And so I hope Steve gets back on the council. I hope I get on, because I will vote no on every single issue, no exceptions whatsoever. And I repeat my pledge to reduce Ellsworth's property taxes. That's my platform, and that's my promise. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. I have two friends playing on the opposite teams at the volleyball match, so I started there. I'm hitting bats a lot at the volleyball match. I'd like to say I listened to the council, but those two girls are more important to me today. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there citizens who'd like to speak? Item nine, councillor comments. Councillors, anything that they'd like to comment on? Not on the agenda? Councillor Halloran?
I received several phone calls in tax-related issues in the last week and a half with some discomfort with the amount that taxes have gone up in the last two years. And one of those calls had asked me to express an interest or a comment about some of the department heads living in the town that they work in, that perhaps in that person's idea, they might be more accountable to the expenses if it involved their tax bill. I'm not sure that I'm on that page, but I, I did state that I would bring that to the council's attention. The, the other issue that I would like to bring up is, I have never experienced this before, but last Friday, I received several calls that the area of HCTC, that the odor was absolutely horrible for Maine Organics, and that students were coming out of the bus with their nose in their shirts because the odor was so bad. I had never heard of the odor going that way, but I guess last Friday was a, a big event that HCTC with the odor. And thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, just to follow up on that. Do we have a date yet for the workshop? Excuse me, for the workshop that we'll be hosting related to the issue with Maine Organics?
No, we're waiting to try to.
Waiting from DEP, that's right. So we do have one in the works, bringing in DEP to help us figure out how to address this.
Yes, and I will say also, there are some composting facilities in the area, and Charlie and, I don't know, someone else. Anyways, they're going to visit to see how they contain the smell, the odors and things, to see if we can learn a little bit more about it.
Trying to find a path forward.
Sorry, trying to find a path forward. And so, yeah, so there's both of those avenues that we're working on.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I just want to respond a little bit, because I know you said you were still on the fence about the notion of whoever reached out to you, department heads or other staff not living in the city. I just, I think it's important that we just express again that the taxes are a reflection of a lot of things, and a lot of the yes-or-no decisions come down to the council. I would sort of remove the department heads. They, they take the council's decisions and run with them as best that they can, which has been really great, in my opinion. So I just don't want folks to think that department heads, because we're looking at everything closely during budget season. We have like 100 hours of meetings, looking and listening to budgets and the staff, department heads especially. And they're diligent, and they're, you know, frugal, and doing good work. So I just, I want citizens watching or listening to, to sort of, you know, they definitely come to us. They can be upset that the budget's increased, and we are as well, and we all live in town and pay those taxes. But I would remove the department heads from that conversation.
Agreed.
If I could comment on that? It's my job to present what Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth asked me to present. And I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with having department heads have to live in town. But when a citizen calls and expresses that and asks me to express that, here I am. I'm not sure I'm in agreement with it, but I'm here to represent Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth. I'm Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth only.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Item 10 or 11, N11 are part of the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member saw requests, in which event the item will be, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 10 is Council Order Number 092400, Request of the Deputy City Clerk to Approve the Time Polling Places Will Be Open For the November 5th, 2024 State of Maine Election And the City of Ellsworth Municipal Election Is 7:00 AM. N11, Council Order Number 092401, Request of the Deputy City Clerk for Appointment Of Wardens and Board Clerks For The Four Voting Districts Within The City of Ellsworth And For The November 5th, 2024 State of Maine Election And City of Ellsworth Municipal Election. Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? New business. We have one, two, three, four, five licenses that I will read off. And if you would like to have any of those removed, then we will do so and vote on it separately. Is everything in order? I, the new business, the Corporate Chefs is separate?
Louise and Thomas Joy, that means that can come on.
Oh, that's right, okay. Everything else is all set? Okay, so it's.
And Margs, did you get everything?
For Louise Joy and Thomas Joy, that city junkyard automobile graveyard permit, is that, so they're no longer in business?
They're no longer in business.
Is, is there still a junkyard there?
We have three cars left to give it up.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you for the update.
So Provender LLC, DBA Provender, 112 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, victular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class 1, 2, 3, 4, malt, spiritus, and venus liquor license. James B. Card II, DBA Jimbo's Junkin', 62 Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. Ryan Launder, DBA Strike and Slice, 25 Eastwood Lane, Suite 6, renewal of a city Class C license, victular and liquor, and state liquor license, Class 1, 2, 3, and 4. Margs Mex, Ellsworth LLC, DBA Margaritas Ellsworth, 191 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, amusement liquor, victular, and renewal of a state Class A restaurant lounge, malt liquor, wine, spirits, Class 11 liquor license.
You have to do a public.
Oh, God. See? We will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on these? We'll close the public hearing. Now, what would you like to do? Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So we have a new business. It's the next one, Corporate Chefs LLC, 21 Kingsland Crossing, for a new city Class C license, victular and liquor, and a new state qualified catering license. Is there, is there a representative? Hey there.
Hi.
Would you mind stating your name?
I'm Anne Abbott.
And everything's all set? All right, so we will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment? Would you like to talk a little bit? Would you like to come up to the podium and talk a little bit about this, or?
If you have any questions, I will, but.
Okay.
We just opened a cafe in Ellsworth in Jack's Lab. I've been at Jack's Lab in Bar Harbor for the last three years, doing their catering and their alcohol and stuff down there. This is a new hybrid branch of the same thing that we're doing down there. It's just to cater to all the people within-house. It's not outside, it's closed to the community. Anybody have any questions for me?
That was helpful to know. Yeah, it is. Thank you very much.
I'll try to go get a sandwich.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Item 13, Council Order 092402, Announcement and Presentation of the City of Ellsworth Designation as a Main Street City. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Tabitha White. I'm a board member for Heart of Ellsworth. With me is Karen Otto, another board member and executive director, Karen Mano. And we're here to share some really exciting news. Tomorrow, September 17th, Main Street America Let's see here. The press release has been shared in your council meeting package. This process started back in October of 2023 and will culminate at the award ceremony at the Maine Downtown Center's annual meeting this November 7th in Bedford, Maine. Anyone is welcome to attend, and tickets can be bought directly through the MDC website, which is the Maine Downtown Center website. We look forward to the citywide celebration that we hope to hold in early 2025 with the date, time, and place to be determined, and we look forward to planning this with city staff and the elected officials.
I'd like to also add that there's a couple of benefits. I know that all of you have been briefed on a lot of the value of becoming a Main Street. A couple of benefits that start immediately tomorrow. We will have a live page on Main Street, Maine, and that website will also provide a link, language, and logos for our website as well as for the city to post on the City of Ellsworth website and Discover Ellsworth website. Main Street America will be adding Ellsworth to their website in January 2025. They're currently redoing their branding, so we have to wait till January. And also beginning tomorrow, we will have immediate access to economic and community development resources. We'll be eligible for the CDBG support points and funding opportunities that support city projects and save taxpayer dollars to bolster all of Ellsworth, not just the downtown. And we look forward to continuing to support our city's new partnership with MDC to make the most of our city's MS, Main Street America designation.
And again, my name is Karen Mano. I'm the Director of Heart of Ellsworth. In closing, I just want to not only speak for myself, but for all of the current board members and volunteers as well as past board members, some board members who are no longer here with us. But we all just want to deeply state that we appreciate the council's dedication to learning about the Main Street America approach over the past nine years. It's been nine years since we've started this journey. And each of you here on this council have taken some extra time, as well as some past city councilors who are also no longer in those seats, but each of you have taken time to consider our city's distinctive circumstances and has independently recognized that this designation will strengthen our city. It will sustain partnerships, raise awareness of opportunities, and create a collaborative framework that municipal employees, the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce and Heart of Ellsworth and other regional partners can leverage for the city's overall development and our developmental success in the years to come. As the saying goes, progress happens at the speed of trust. And now, nine years later, we stand on the eve of the statewide announcement that Ellsworth is designated as the first Main Street America community in both Hancock and Washington Counties. And we just really want to give you all our significant thank you for all the work that you both have done. Well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, we meant to leave a little-
Michelle!
I mean, could you just give us a little thumbnail version of how many hours it took to go through this process to get where you are today?
Well- That one's not in our speaking points here.
The requirements were to have 10 committee meetings, and those committee meetings we kept to an hour because we were tapping a lot of people throughout the community and, you know, wanted to limit that time. So there was that, and so that's 10 hours. But I would say that on the back end, we, each of those committee members participated in gathering information, interviewing key people in the community, doing online research, writing, 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 and writing. And I would say we haven't had a moment to really think about what that took, but I would say anywhere from, I guess, 10, maybe 300, 300 to 500 hours of-
And that's isolated, and that's isolated to just the, what Karen is speaking about is that's isolated just to the actual application that we submitted this year. But to maybe answer your question more holistically, last year, our volunteers, because every single activity that we do, every meeting we have, every weed that we pull up on Main Street, if you will, all of those hours are logged. And last year, in one year alone, we logged 1,400 community hours that were spent on bolstering, you know, the downtown, but also the entire city. So maybe if you multiply that by nine, I don't know, I'm just teasing, but I mean, I don't know how to answer that question, but it's a great question.
My point is, obviously, there was a lot of work that went into this over a number of years. Where is the closest other 11 to Ellsworth?
Belfast. Belfast, I think.
Belfast.
Yeah, and just to note, there hasn't been a new Main Street in Maine for, since 2016, I think it is.
Whoa.
Yeah, we think so.
Yeah, and we were the first Main Street to be brought on by the Maine Downtown Center's current staff. They'd never escorted, the leadership in Maine Downtown Center hadn't brought a new Main Street on as a group before, so that was, we were their first to do that. So they had updated their process prior to our application, so we were also the first to go through their sort of enhanced process. And we had an amazing learning experience with them as well, and I think that the next people to come on will find it even more interesting, maybe even more challenging because we, because of all the great things that have already been going on here in Ellsworth, we really, really raised the bar on what a Main Street has to, you know, the criteria for being a Main Street general.
I just, I want to add, highlight this really is a big deal in my day job. We partner with the Maine Downtown Center quite a bit. It's a great organization, and the value that this will bring, the recognition is going to be significant and have economic impact on the city. Before this announcement, I had already planned on going to the Maine Downtown Center annual meetings the first time, I think, since 2018 that they've had their annual event. So I'll be representing my day job, but I'm happy to represent the council of Ellsworth when they have their, their big exciting announcement down there, too. So, but welcome you all to Bedford's an amazing Main Street community as well and a great place to visit, but I will be there.
I think Charlie and I are attending.
Great.
Oh, excellent. That's great. And if there are other council members that are interested, we would be happy to have that. Glad to hear that there'll be so much council and staff representation. I don't really know, and I think it's 30-plus years ago that the city, you know, brought in. I don't know exactly how you frame it up, but I just think about the Chamber of Commerce and the legacy that that organization has in our community. And I will just say, as the executive director, we strive to be that to the community and to, really to continue to partner, and that's one of the reasons why I made a statement about including them in our statement, is that, you know, the city is better because of the Ellsworth Area Chamber of Commerce, and we strive to continue to partner and hope in 30 years that people will look back on this the same way that people look at the Chamber today. There is room for all of these entities here, and they are what make our city great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Item 14, Request, Council Order 092403, Request of the Fire Chief to Purchase New Hydraulic Extrication Tools. Hi.
Counsel, Fire Chief Scott Gilro. This is just a kind of a continuation from budget. During the capital improvement process, we were approved to purchase new rescue tools for the truck downstairs. It's replacing 25-year-old hydraulic tools. We have gone through the process, we've gone through three vendors, they've been demoed with the crew downstairs, they came back with their quotes. I've made sure you've had a copy of all three quotes in there. We've decided that Bergeron is the most appropriate. The crews downstairs, that's the one that they've selected for easy operation. So the request from myself and from the guys downstairs is to go ahead and purchase from Bergeron the hydraulic tools.
Any questions from the council?
Could you state the amount for the record?
Sure. The total amount's going to be $58,299.05. We were approved for $65,000, so we were able to keep that well down below the original price.
And the other pricing as well?
I think the highest bid was $65,000, and Bergeron was actually the lowest bid, but it's also the most requested tool by the guys downstairs.
So the lowest number, but the best value?
Correct.
Fair enough.
And that includes the maintenance plan for the first year.
And could you help us understand, like you said the old one is 25 years old. Is this one a 25-year product, or is this a 10-year product?
Well, typically, no, they're not meant to go 25 years.
Okay.
So typically, we're looking at 10 years, maybe 15 at the most. Technology changes, vehicles change, the materials your vehicles were made for 10, 15, 20 years ago is not the same thing that vehicles are made of now. Stronger steels, different types of metals in there, and so we've had to, we have not caught up to the technology that's out there right now. And so what we're requesting is going to allow us to continue with the new technology for vehicles and allow us to gain access when we need to.
Counsel, I think?
Oh, so just to clarify, so is like the layman term for this, the jaws of life?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a pretty important tool for-
Correct.
-crash scenes and getting people-
Yeah, I didn't use the term jaws of life because that's proprietary to a specific brand. However, it is the brand that we are purchasing.
Okay.
Right, yep. But yes, that's exactly what they are. They are the jaws that we use to gain access into vehicles.
I think somebody mentioned during budget hearings that these are generally used a number of times a year.
Yes, in fact, I think, we used them three weeks ago, so.
You hope not to, but-
We don't want to, but when we do, we want to make sure that we have what we can use for the new technology.
Is this, never having seen one of these operate, and I hope never to see one operate, but is this something where you have to keep the old one for certain circumstances, or is this something that you sell off the old one? Is this something that the old one would do something that the new one won't, and the new one will do something that the old-
No, not really. The new set of tools will take care of all the older vehicles that we deal with, plus it will take care of the newer vehicles that we deal with. We have kind of two sets of tools downstairs. One is, one complete set is 25 years old plus, and then there's another set that was an add-on to what's already there, which is about 10 or 15 years old. So we'll hold on to those as kind of our backup if something goes down, that we have a redundancy, so that we're not having to call a neighboring community from 20 miles away to come in and back us up. So, yes, we do have some tools that we'll hold on to, but we're just replacing the 25-year-old tools that are downstairs. And yes, we could potentially sell those or donate those to another department that's in need of tools, that doesn't have tools right now.
The total for approval is a bit higher than the quote. Is that, does that also include like the first payment?
That includes the 981 for the preventative maintenance.
Move to approve the request of the Fire Chief to Purchase New Hydraulic Extrication Tools From Bergeron Protective Clothing in the Amount of $58,299.05 Funding From Capital Outlay.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Counsel. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Council Order Number 092404, Request of the Historic Preservation Chair to Reestablish a Cemetery Committee. This is sponsored by Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I just want to, I guess, set a little bit of context with that. There's additional information on this from when we last spoke about cemeteries a couple of months ago, a memo from the city manager sent out yesterday, and then I think part of the public packet earlier today. I want to thank Charlie for a really thoughtful exploration of the ways that the city can best address the management of cemeteries that are under the supervision of the City of Ellsworth. There is a need to inventory them, to map them, to update bylaws and other organizational work to make sure that we are doing the best we can for both those that are interred there and the people who care about them. And it's from that space that I think both Charlie and I have approached the need to update what Ellsworth has to deal with this, and specifically finding out there is a cemetery ordinance. It's very, I forget what the original year is.
Old.
It's been a while. It's very, it's like, when you can tell the original typewriter type that's done it, but the cemetery ordinance calls for a cemetery commission, and we haven't had one in quite some time. So it's appropriate to have it in place, to have that structure, and then from there to be able to support, again, those that are interred there and those that care deeply about them. So we have the memo with review, but I think it makes sense to move forward with this proposal at this time.
We did have an email that I've been asked to read. It was from a gentleman pertaining to Juniper Cemetery, but I think it was the perception that this is what this was about. So I am going to read this. It is not from me. It is from a citizen that is unable to attend, so asked for it to be read in the meeting. It's Richard Henscom. Says, "Good day. My name is Richard Henscom residing at 110 Bayside Road. I would like to comment on the establishment of yet another Juniper Cemetery Committee and have my comments read to the board during this discussion of Council Order 092404, Request of the Historic Preservation Chair to Reestablish a Cemetery Committee. First, let me establish my position as a stakeholder and not just some random zealot. My mother and father are buried at Juniper along with my grandparents and even my great-grandparents, also assorted other relatives, including the mother of my children and a grandson. In addition to the various family plots, I own a plot, and it is my wish to one day be interred at Juniper, joining my relatives. I trust you can readily recognize and accept that I care what happens at Juniper and want to see it properly operated and maintained. That is why I volunteered to join the previously attempted committee and attended every meeting unlike the counselor proffering this resolution, who despite being selected to join the committee did not attend a single meeting. I found that committee's attempts to properly organize and act very frustrating as it seemed that unseen hands are blocking our attempts and hoping for a failure. We lack hard information as we suffered through many meetings and able to gain access to needed information and records. At one point, we were even told that the documents we were seeking had been removed from City Hall. Let me close with my recommendation that any committee chartered with the reestablishment of an organization to properly operate and maintain, Juniper be comprised of genuine stakeholders and individuals of both the knowledge and dedication to achieve the goal. In my humble view, this is not the preview of the historic preservation," I think you meant purview, "of the historic preservation board, and if the council in its wisdom decides otherwise, it suggests that they be given woodbine as well, as perhaps they can find knowledge and efficiency and scale." So upon reading this, I did respond and clarified that, so what we're trying, what we're attempting to do is something that is, that used to be in the City of Ellsworth, and this is for all cemeteries that are owned by the city, or overseen by the city at this time. And as someone that used to work with the cemeteries quite a bit, the ones that the city owned, it is not an easy thing, and having a committee that can really pay attention, the historic preservation commission being able to, having the background knowledge of the cemetery and the stones within and the people buried within, including our veterans, I think that this is a great idea. And I think that this statement, where I understand the passion from the person, this is not what we're attempting to do, so I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I think it was maybe a little bit confusing to the person who wrote in about what the goal of the cemetery commission was. And I think one thing I was thinking about as I was reading through this is that the reason the Juniper Cemetery came to us is because nobody stepped up at that time. And so if we have a commission like this, that will create kind of a safe baseline for how all the cemeteries are cared for. And once Juniper Cemetery did come into our control or ownership or whatever it's called, it just became really clear that it was unclear how various things in terms of funding and in terms of who does what work when. And so I think it's going to be a great idea to have a commission, again, to create a standard for care for all of these important places, whether there's passion in the moment or not passion in the moment. And my experience with commissions in Ellsworth is that all passionate people are welcome to come attend, so I'm sure he will be welcome to be a part of the commission if he would like.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I have a question. Am I correct that the charter actually requires us to have this committee?
I didn't, I read it.
It doesn't.
It doesn't require.
I looked, because I was trying to find that thing.
I believe the ordinance references it several times, so.
Well, I looked for it, I couldn't find it.
No, but you've been, unless I had a, I went on the one on the website.
There's like one spot in our ordinance is where it mentions the cemetery commission, but it's like in passing, but as reference, so it existed at some point.
And our ordinance matters or the charter?
Cemetery ordinance.
Yeah, that's in one ordinance, sorry. But yeah, it's three references in the cemetery ordinance, but it doesn't formally like- But it doesn't formally like talk about how to create it.
But so if there are three times in the ordinance that references a commission that currently doesn't exist, which I think added, added weight to making this move. And again, finding that there are other cemeteries out there that we're exploring and trying to find that have not had attention, and that's not okay, so.
Jen, would you like to speak on this, or are you all?
So I think it's also
Whoops, can you say?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm Jennifer Sala. I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I offered, I worked with Charlie and Sue on coming up with this idea as an alternative to the Juniper Cemetery Committee because Juniper is not alone in being, where the people who had been stewarding or taking care of the cemetery just found themselves unable, for whatever reason, to keep doing it. And that there was no more interest in people coming along to pick up where they were leaving off. So there's also like the Higgins Cemetery on the Bucksport Road recently contacted the city again and said, "Hey, we've been trying for years to get you guys to help us." And there really hasn't been anyone here who, like staff, doesn't have the ability or the capacity to really, you know, take care of something like this. Like you would have to have Public Works go out and mow cemeteries all over the place. And it would just be a lot to expect city staff to be able to deal with this when it's something that clearly is written in the ordinance, like it has responsibilities in the ordinance. And so who's taking care of that if this committee isn't there? And so I just felt like instead of trying to create a cemetery association for Juniper and then create a cemetery committee, talking to Charlie, we were like, "It just seems like a better idea to try to put this all together. The city keeps Juniper Cemetery and we're able to like streamline that process and get people who are really interested and really engaged." Because if they couldn't get a cemetery association just for Juniper, then the concern is that you would not be able to populate both. And the city would be stuck trying to form these new associations for a bunch of different cemeteries or these cemeteries would be overlooked that are also in need of help. I know that Greenwood up out towards Otis is another one that the city has been contacted about that is in need of a lot of help and like some form of intervention. So not just from a historic perspective, but also just from, like Nancy says, like people who are interred there or people who plan to be interred somewhere like Juniper, it's important for us to show respect for that and to take responsibility for it. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Counselor Helen?
What would, explain to me if you could, establishing this committee. It would encompass all of the cemeteries within the city, correct?
Not necessarily. So there are some cemeteries that still have active associations, like Woodbine. Woodbine's doing their thing. They're great. They've got it taken care of. Juniper, of course, as we know, doesn't really have that anymore. And then I mentioned Greenwood. There's one on Kissick Point out on the Bayside Road that it has saplings grown up like this. I haven't reached out to the property owner yet because I was just, you know, we have to get this together. I did let Charlie know, and we do have intentions of mowing that before Veterans Day just to make sure and put in our flags and all that because it does have, from the research that I did, there are two Civil War veterans and a World War I veteran. And that by state law means that the city is responsible for taking care of that cemetery. Not just the veterans' graves, but all of them. And it's small, but it's still important. It's off the beaten path and all that. But it's still important that we do our responsible thing and do, take care of them. So like those would be fine, but any of these places like the Higgins Cemetery or Greenwood or anyone who contacts and says, "I can't take care of this anymore. We need help," then we do that. Or if there's an ancient burial ground somewhere that someone's just kind of let go because the current property owner isn't taking care of it, then the city handles it responsibly and works with that property owner to make sure that it's taken care of to state law. But we're not taking anything from anyone per se, yeah.
As the population ages, is this more common that people get tired of running their own and they go to the cities?
And then my generation doesn't care, yeah. Yeah, they don't want to take responsibility.
I would say it's that case for a lot of civic organizations, just people are busy. And I wouldn't, I don't know that they don't care, but they're just not engaged. And so it's an issue for a lot of organizations.
Yeah, in my work as an attorney for other municipalities, multiple municipalities in the last few years, I've advised them on taking over cemeteries where similar situations that they just don't have enough people on the board or volunteers. So I think this is a trend I've seen anecdotally, but it sounds like it may be an actual trend for municipalities having to take over the care of cemeteries.
I know where my partner's mom is buried, I think in Franklin or Hancock, no one's taking care of it. She's been there for like 15 years and it's just, and someone actually mentioned to me today, another one out in Lemoine. That was in that part where it was put in Hancock, but it's also in Lemoine. And so I think Lemoine thinks that Hancock's taking care of it, and Hancock thinks Lemoine's taking care of it, and no one is. So yeah, I think it's pretty common.
I'm from Lemoine originally, so I'm just trying to figure where my parents live there. My mother does. Just trying to figure where they was. So my only thing, I do worry, I think this is going to be much bigger than a committee. I think it's a great idea to form this committee, but I think the floodgates could open. And then you're talking about cemeteries that are still open and they have perpetual care and finances and people. And so I think this, once we set this up, it should be, it's going to be much, much larger and will probably require paid staff to take care of it. Because Ellsworth is large. Ellsworth has a lot of cemeteries.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, exactly. And closed cemeteries are one thing because you are, you're taking care of them. But when you start accepting open cemeteries like Juniper, it's a whole different ballgame. And so, and there's a lot of those left. Counsel, lines?
Ooh, you're good at this.
I'm just so used to saying it, Steve.
I'll take it as a compliment. Just so, on that point, Michelle, and to clarify, so this, by forming this committee, we're not committing the city to taking ownership of additional cemeteries, or is that incorrect?
That's what my, that's what I'm worried about. So when this ordinance comes back to the council, I just think that that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah. But as the state has it, if no one is able to care for this cemetery, that cemetery is to contact the city and the city is now responsible for it. So that's just, seems to be the thing time and time again that keeps coming up. And I've seen this in multiple emails from people to the city saying that, "I did my research. I contacted a lawyer. This is what they told me to do."
Okay. I'm not sure if that's correct. I know there are certain laws in the state that require the maintenance of veterans' graves, but I don't know. Well, you may be correct, Jen, I don't know. But I think the, and regardless of whether or not we form this committee, the law is the law, right? So if that is the law, then that is the law. But yeah, I think what, you know, yeah, I guess I would, I'm supportive of forming the committee because it's important to work, but I think we'll obviously need to have more follow-up as to what are the actual requirements for the city. Because I think it's great to be able to have this committee to help, you know, organize and oversee and make sure that our cemeteries are being taken care of. But I think it's another thing for the city to be then obligated to take ownership of all cemeteries. So it seems like there's, those are kind of two separate, but related issues.
It's a big thing. A lot of people have died here, yeah, yeah.
And we do need to be careful of what we're saying is required by the city of Ellsworth until we actually know what is actually required by the city. Because we don't take over entire cemeteries because there are veterans. It's those veterans' graves, unless it's a certain size, and then you, so there's more to that lot.
I understand and support the caution. As we move forward, one thing that occurs to me while I'm listening to this conversation is the commission can be a resource that when there is an association for a specific cemetery that's struggling, they haven't had someplace to go. They come into City Hall and it depends on what staff person you talk to. But this commission could be a holding place for resources and connections and answer questions about what is the law currently. So I see it as a resource to support.
I agree.
Not to take away.
Right.
The intent is not to take away any of the cemeteries that currently are being cared for. But there are some that are not being, and this seems the right thing to do with this commission as we move forward.
Yeah, ideally the commission educates us, and then we have a better sense of obligations and opportunities.
Will we then see a future council vote to ratify a new edited ordinance from this commission once it's formed?
I would assume so.
It would have to be. We have to ratify all ordinances for the city.
My understanding
And again, I encourage you to work with staff.
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is that we'll, like with the other commissions or committees, is that we'll take applications. People can contact and say, "I'm interested in working on this." And then you all will be the ones to appoint five people to this committee. And then we can kind of go from there on how we want to handle the care, how we want to like make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do by state law and also by the city's ordinance, and then review the ordinance, which I know is really old and probably could stand to be updated regardless. So we'll be working closely with council and staff on all that.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I would love to make a motion based on how much I am committed to making this work, if now's a good time. So I would move to create a cemetery commission for the city of Ellsworth, which will temporarily be chaired by Jen Sala in her role as chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. This commission will be responsible for overseeing the maintenance, financing and long-term infrastructure and strategic planning for Ellsworth cemeteries under the city purview. Initial priorities will include recruiting appropriate residents of Ellsworth to be nominated to the city council to be on the standing commission, working with the finance department and the city clerk's office on policies regarding cemetery reserve funds, preparation of an inventory of current cemeteries and developing a comprehensive future cemetery plan focused on rehabilitating the old burial ground, enhancing historic signage and landscaping.
Second.
Any further discussion?
One clarification question. You imagine Jen would be temporary chair in her role as historic preservation chair. Are they, are we linking these commissions through Jen, or is that you're just specifying that that's sort of background?
It's as the discussion has been that that's appropriate for, for the chair of the commission to at least start and being the chair of this commission, and then they can move forward from there. There's a lot of work to be done in the details of it.
So maybe due to her role in historic preservation rather through it? I think that's what you're saying, because it sounds like it's being linked.
I would think that once it's populated, that commission would elect officers. But until it's populated, I'll be doing, that basically means I'll be recruiting people, I think, is what that means. That was my understanding at least, yeah.
I do have one, this is a very confusing issue. I certainly want to lend a hand to any cemetery that needs help, but I don't want to take over every cemetery because it's more fun for Ellsworth to do with than the existing committees. But you, this says cemetery committee and you're saying commission.
It consistently says commission, and people have been saying committee, and I've been sitting quietly.
Okay.
The motion is for a commission.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
And is there a difference in the legalities of that?
All depends on, in my understanding, is the cemetery commission, it's not pursuant to the ordinance that currently exists, correct?
That says a board.
That says a board. We're talking about a commission, which could be a committee. I think it's all
Are we going potatoes for tomatoes?
I think we're going form over substance. I think it's, it's an organization of volunteers that then provides guidance to the council for ultimate adoption of ordinances and policies. So I think we can call it whatever we want, super team or any of that, but
I'll take that.
Super team, alright. I would like to make a friendly amendment. We'll stick with commission.
I have a question slash maybe question about a friendly amendment, which is that I do think it makes sense for this commission to work on the ordinance. And should that be in there somewhere? Like developing a, an updated ordinance and a comprehensive future cemetery plan?
Happy to have that as a friendly amendment. I see in like the fourth line down, long-term infrastructure and strategic planning for the cemeteries that are under the city purview, I think would certainly be there. We know that the updating the ordinance, I would consider part of the infrastructure of doing this.
Yeah, that's fine then. I actually think it's sort of long anyway, so I'm happy to. I did add my friendly amendment, making it even longer.
Is there a dedicated city staff member appointed to this almost formed commission yet? Or do you have somebody in mind?
I've been working with Sue mostly. Like she has the Juniper documents. And so I don't know, it seemed like there was a reference there, maybe it was in the email, but it seemed like Sue might be interested in, he did say city staff. So I think she would be a good option since she's the one who's been involved in the meetings with myself and Charlie through this process.
I think that would be Charlie's decision. It's Charlie's decision to who he must appoint to that.
Yeah.
And I, Charlie has spoke on Friday's meeting that also bringing in the finance department, so.
She was in our last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's in your motion, right, working, yeah.
Yes, working with the finance department and the city clerk's office on policies regarding a bunch of things.
That's the most thorough motion I think I've ever heard.
I can't take credit for it. I am reading from Charlie's memo. But there has been, November was how many months ago, nine, 10 months of heartfelt work into trying to do right by the cemeteries of the city. So thank you for the opportunity to make the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those not in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Item 16, council order number 092405, request of the city manager to enter into an agreement to install electric vehicle charging stations. There's a very thorough memo that we were provided on this. Too long to read, but thoughts?
Well, I have a couple of questions, but I don't know if you will know the answer to them.
I don't, but I mean, if it gets too far, we can just table it till next month anyway, I think, but.
So this was discussed the last finance committee meeting. This, I actually, I think we've chatted about a couple of meetings. Charlie's just been updating us on it because of the financial component of it. So we have had a few conversations as the finance committee. So the three of us, Michelle, might have some answers to beat. But I don't know if we have anything outside what's in this memo. Charlie's been working very engaged on this issue, and so, but if you have a few questions, we can answer them.
I'll just ask him. I'll just say quickly that as a electric car owner, I think this is a fantastic idea. And I know that when I'm driving my car up and down the East Coast, which I do, being able to charge someplace where you can actually walk around and go to a park or go out to lunch is so great. And I cannot tell you how many hours I have spent in Walmart parking lots and Walmarts. And sometimes Walmart is great, but it is so great to be able to walk around where you charge. So my questions, the photo of where it would be, I just want to make sure I have it correct. It's the far parking spots up against the grass.
Against the grass, yeah.
And I understand from reading the memo that what we're talking about tonight is to put in four level two chargers because that is actually a cost-effective thing to do. And then from there, hopefully, we would move forward trying to turn them into level three chargers?
Or I think it's either turn them into level three or just get more chargers and, you know, continue to provide. on, you know, continue to provide level-two, but also get the super chargers or whatever.
Okay. I just wasn't sure technologically whether one turns in, if you have level-three chargers, no one is going to plug into a level-two charger unless they have to for pay. Um, so I wasn't sure if there was a reason we had to go from level-two to get to level-three, or if it's really just like, uh, this is how much money we can put into this project.
I think, if I recall, it has to do with the, um, the kind of the, the credit that, so, um, Revision Energy, um, is the one, basically facilitates all this, and I think they even approached Charlie about it, pretend, um, so they kind of take care of all of it, and ultimately, you know, the city has to pay, you know, ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, but then that leverages the one hundred and eighteen thousand and change, uh, in state and federal funds. But this program, I believe, is, provides the level-two-
Yeah.
-chargers. So at some point, we just, again, the discussions we'd have in finance committee are, you know, Charlie's hit on a lot of the points in his memo, but like, you know, having this downtown, so the level-twos, if people can't just charge and get out of here, it's, they plug in, like you said, and they go, they turn around and go, "Oh, where do I want to eat or shop," or, um, you know, things of that nature. Um, so it, it actually encourages the, the folks to stick around for a little while. We do have two, the level-two chargers in the, um, Franklin Street Park as well, um, and we had a few members of the public talk about their experiences using the chargers, so the idea is this builds on that infrastructure, um, gets more people coming downtown, and, and then at some point, you know, we just had a broader conversation of, you know, updating Ellsworth's infrastructure for, you know, electric cars and the benefits that will have both to the local businesses, but ultimately, as Charlie's memo lays out, it could also be a profit generator for the city. Um, and so it's kind of the, you know, and I think Charlie's memo does a good job of talking about the pros and cons, um, as far as, um, you know, it does take up some parking spaces, um, and, you know, it's maintenance and accessibility issues, but, um, ultimately, my opinion is that this is a really good opportunity for the city, and, um, it's, from what I've learned about it, it seems like it's a kind of a win-win for the city and the downtown businesses.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. I think, I think it's a great idea, and like I said, I've been to a lot of city charging stations. I also appreciate that the company that Revision Energy is using ChargePoint, um, chargers, because I've also been to some cities where I've tried to park downtown, and they have a charger that is a brand that is just not one of the usual ones that you find, and then you have to download some different app, so this is a good one. Um, yeah, my, my, I'm, I'm totally for it. I wish we could go straight to level-three chargers, which I think there are some at Hanaford, is that true?
Hanaford or, where was the?
Or down by-
McDonald's?
There's some Tesla ones by, yeah, right, there's-
A Hanaford.
Yeah, there's some Tesla ones by the Hanaford, and then there's some other ones. So those are quicker chargers, but, um, anyways, this, it'll just be another option. And in my, again, I've owned an electric car since 2019, and it used to be that I could go anywhere on the east coast, and now the owners of electric cars are outpacing the options for charge. It has gotten significantly more difficult to travel just in the last year, because I think more people are buying electric cars before the infrastructure has been made, so I am a hundred percent behind, um, putting these in. If I was going to change anything, I would try to automatically go to level-three, but it sounds like that's just not really an option.
Yeah, that's not what this program is.
Yeah.
Thank you. I want to highlight two points. I love that this is coming up after we've heard about the Main Street designation for Heard of Ellsworth, because this is in the downtown, this is walking distance as, as Councilon Lyons outlined. The second thing I want to read, because I have heard concerns about the, um, electric charging, charging stations that are next to Merrill Park on Franklin, that there's no charge for them, that the city is paying for the electricity, and the next-to-the-bottom bullet on new revenue stream, the city has the ability to set its own rate to what the market demands, but EV sites often make fifteen to thirty percent of each bill as additional revenue to the city, and I just want to make sure that that point is made clear while we talk about this is the right location to encourage people to charge their vehicle while they're enjoying downtown Ellsworth.
Counselor Mo, did you-
Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, Manager Pierce did state that, um, he was looking at possibly putting level-three over where the Merrill Park is too, so there have been, the staff's been having conversations about it.
Yeah. It's great, I love it.
I think the other thing, too-
I don't need to park here, but it makes me so happy when you can park someplace nice.
The, the motion is not asked, is not to, to put these in, and it is that if we, he's going to sign a contract in it, and I read the contract through, um, and, um, we're going to apply for this grant, but if we don't receive the grant, then the contract is null and void, and we don't owe the ten, you know, any other additional funds. So it does, it is more to apply and sign this contract in order to try, um, for financing for those chargers, not necessarily to put them in no matter what.
Will we then have to approve this expenditure over ten thousand, or, because it's under fifteen, we won't have to approve that it comes from a specific fund if the contract is awarded?
So if, if we do receive the, um, the grant, then he would come, or they would come back to the council and accept the grant, and then, um, appropriate the money at that time.
I would like to make this motion. Move to approve the request of the city manager to sign a contract with Revision Energy and apply to Efficiency Main for an award program which will help fund the installation of four EV fast, it's not really fast charging, EV level-two charging stations in the city of Ellsworth.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Allen?
I'm all for this idea, but it does make me nervous that we haven't established what we're charging and how we're collecting. Um, and this word potential incentives in both cases make me a little nervous, um, to push forward once you start one of these balls rolling, and I think, you know, if we don't get on the electric boat, that we're going to be standing alone. But the way I would like to see, if there was some defined amount that we could charge and how we charge, or, um, I, it makes me nervous when I see this potential word, and I don't want to get too far into this and have the city paying a hundred and thirty thousand bucks plus free electricity. That, that scares me, and I realize that this is a toned-down, um, request, but, boy, I'd like to see, uh, I'm all for it, I'd just like to see a defined amount that, and a way to collect the money.
I would agree with that. I wonder if there's some way we can put that sentiment into this motion, I don't know-
I'm not asking anyone to change, but I, I just, it, during the finance committee, we talked about, um, this, and, um, and I realize that you're talking about ten or eleven thousand dollars here, but it's hard to stop the ball rolling when you kick the ball into the court, and, uh, it, it, it nerves me up a, a little bit. I know we, we talked at the finance committee about perhaps metering, uh, some parking, and I questioned if you can meter this for a higher fee than another, uh, space, but I, I want to treat everybody fairly. I want the electric people to be treated fair, but I also want the people that are buying fuel to be treated fair. Um, and just a little nervous about this word potential, but I'd love to see it here.
Just, I think to Steve and, or Counselor Harland and Counselor Stein's points, um, as I understand it, this is basically to approve the city manager to enter into the contract to see if we get the funds, and if we do, we still, we, the council, it comes back to the council, and we don't have to, if we don't like the deal, we don't have to take it. Um, and then maybe at that point, um, we can see if there's more information, see if we can get this information, um, provided to us before we vote to finalize, finalize the moving forward with it. So there's still time and opportunity to answer these questions, I think, um, and it'll be in the minutes, and maybe when we talk to Charlie on Friday, we can maybe, you know, raise those questions with him, and see if we can get more of that, of that information.
And what I understand from the memo is the reason to move forward now, even though there are some decisions to be made in the future, is just for the sake of being able to apply for this grant, and-
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hate to see us lose the opportunity when these decisions, yes, need to be made, but can be made in the future.
And should be, yeah.
Yeah, and they, they, there's no, it will have to come back to the council, there's no way it can kind of run out of our control from here.
It can, and, and even through the budget season, we would have-
You'd have to be making those decisions.
Yeah, we'd be making those decisions on revenue, so. So, your first, second discussion, all those in favor? All those not? Alright, um, item seventeen, Council, Council Order 092406, request of the Public Works Director to purchase a used plow truck.
I have this case.
Oh? I'm sorry?
He wants to table this.
Oh, okay.
Let's table.
Second. All those in favor?
Whoa, 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 what's the purpose of tabling this?
Um, so there was, last week, there was more information that was required, and where Mike is not around tonight, he didn't want to put Amanda on the spot, not knowing enough information, so he'd like to get the rest of the information together and then bring it back next month.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All those not in favor? Okay, item eighteen, Council Order 092407, request of the IT Systems Administrator to purchase a vehicle detection system for the High Street and Beachland Road intersection. Here it comes.
It's like he can hear us or something.
Jason Igles, IT Director. I'm here to request the purchase of a video detection system for the intersection at Beachland Road and High Street, uh, to replace the failed in-ground loop detectors that are there now. Um, our practice has been, when those loops fail, to replace those with camera systems. Um, I have a proposal from Coastal Traffic in York for a MyoVision three-hundred-and-sixty-degree camera, uh, for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and that's the direction I would like to move in.
Counselor Mo?
Do these cameras talk to all the other cameras? It's like a smart grid type of thing?
So the, the cameras don't really talk to each other, the controllers do that.
Oh, okay.
So, but it, this is actually a different system than we've been using, the GridSmart. Um, we've been demoing a unit for a couple of months now, uh, really happy with it. GridSmart support has not been up to standard. Um, we've had two units fail, and they take three to four months to get returns, um, so I'd like to try the MyoVision and see how that goes. So they're, it's a different system, but it has the same ultimate function, basically, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was looking to-
I, I know you were, you're very busy, but I would appreciate an explanation of what we're talking about, does it? I'm just going to leave it at that. I've read the memo, it's all English, and yet I still would love to hear from you what these things do.
So the traffic signal needs, uh, needs to know if there's vehicles waiting to proceed through the intersection.
Yeah.
Um, so it uses a detection system to detect whether a vehicle is present. Uh, there are different ways to do that, different technologies. The older technology, it's still, it's not older, it's still used in some places, but, um, it's more susceptible to failure in our climate with frost, in the ground, moving the wires, and they break.
Is this wires that are in the pavement?
They're embedded in the pavement, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we, we've gone to camera systems, which are more reliable, easier to repair, easier to troubleshoot and work on. Um, so what these will do is they, they, you, you get a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree image of the intersection, and you actually draw boxes in the system, and like, actual boxes on the screen, and when the system detects a vehicle in that box, it will put what's called a call to the controller to service that approach. So this is telling the traffic signal whether there's anything there wanting to get through.
And I can hear people asking, is this the same kind of camera that would catch speeders? Does it monitor license plate numbers and drivers, or is it simply basically a motion sensor for making for efficient use?
Strictly a detection, it acts, it does, it doesn't record, so it's live view only. Um, it does vehicle classification as well, so it'll tell you if a truck went through a car, bus, whatever. Um, it can do traffic counts.
I was going to ask that, too.
We didn't license that in this, so it can be added on, it's a licenseable feature.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in order to just get this in, we didn't go there, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Counselor Stein? Currently, you mentioned that the in-ground system was, had failed already, or is failed?
It has failed.
And so the light is just operating off of some other-
We, we were fortunate, because we're new customers to MyoVision, they gave us a demo. So we are actually already using this. Um, it was no, no commitment, if we decided not to purchase, they'll just come get it and take it out. Um, so the signal's been working with this system for a couple of months now, so.
Yeah, it's working well.
It's working well, I really like it, actually.
Just for the, for the public, is this something that you, you know, that, that you would sole source, because it's very difficult to find, or are there other places?
No.
How did you, how did you choose this one?
So the way they do it in GridSmart, they have dealers that are specific to regions. So Coastal Traffic is the main dealer for MyoVision, so if you're in Maine and you want a MyoVision system, you buy it from Coastal Traffic, so that's why we are going with that. Um, the GridSmarts with a company out of Connecticut, so it would be the same thing if we went with a GridSmart again, we'd have to buy it from them in Connecticut, so.
It's not like everybody sells these.
No, we could buy it from Frasier. Frasier Signals does our installations and actual maintenance in the field, uh, we could buy it through them, but they would buy it from Coastal Traffic, so you're just kind of cutting out the middleman doing the business, so.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
So, if this was a competitive situation, obviously, you can't stop traffic, especially this in September and, or August, or whenever it took place. Um, all of these potential suppliers, I'm assuming we're talking penny's difference? That there's not going to be a huge-
No, and it, it depends on what your system, like for MyoVision, we can really only go through either the, directly to the dealer, Coastal Traffic, or through a, a, an installer who's probably going to add a ten percent or whatever, you know, typical cost, so they'd, it would probably be more if you went with a, you threw us, through someone, an installer, basically, uh, because you're going through them, who's then ultimately just going to where I'm going now.
And these people stepped up and offered help, hopefully, to sell you this product, correct?
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it, there's got to be a pretty big value in the fact that we've been able to use their system for two months, that, that's worth something.
It is, and the, the other nice thing I like about MyoVision is if you have a failure, they will give you a system while yours is being repaired. GridSmart does not do that, so you wait three or four months. We were fortunate that Maine DOT had, had a spare GridSmart on the shelf, um, and they loaned it to us. We're very thankful to Maine DOT for that, because these are obviously very expensive, and it's hard to buy one of those just to keep on a shelf in case one fails. Um, so they really bailed us out when the one at High Street and Main Street failed. So, we're just, to have that option of getting a cross ship, you know, when one fails is great, so I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, going forward, we can use more MyoVision.
Any other questions? We have a motion.
Move to approve the request of the IT Systems Administrator to purchase a new vehicle detection system for the High Street and Beachland Road intersection, an amount of seventeen thousand five hundred from Coastal Traffic. Funding to come from the traffic signal maintenance budget.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Item nineteen, Council Order Number 092408, public hearing and potential action on resolution to author- potential action on resolution to authorize the city manager to submit an application for a community enterprise and community development block grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and if awarded, to accept said funds to carry out a program to make facade improvements to downtown buildings. Hi, Matt.
Hey, I'm Matt Williams, City Planner, um, just kind of filling in tonight, but in the memo you received in your packets, it kind of outlined in April, there was a vote on this previously to allocate match, and then to submit the letter of intent to apply, um, which was essentially kind of like phase one of this process. Um, the city moved through that, and also got approval to go through phase two, which was getting approvals from different state and federal, local, um, committee and commission boards, and the city has now moved through that process, and so this, the application is now full and ready to submit, and so that's tonight, um, the request is to have the council approve, um, or authorize, uh, the city manager to submit the application for the hundred thousand dollars to CDVG program.
Come this far.
And it keeps looking great.
How many more steps are there after this?
Uh, a few.
I'm just going. I move to adopt a resolution to formally apply for and accept funds from the community enterprise.
Oh, sorry, there's a public hearing.
Yeah, I was trying to, like, public hearing.
Come on, John, I thought you were supposed to be the public hearing guy.
We will open the public hearing, does anyone have any comments on this grant?
Um, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Mark.
That's all right.
Um, Cara Romano, heart of Ellsworth, I just have a quick question. At what phase, like, I, I know you already said this, but can you specifically explain what phase you're at, and is the application going in, and is the city going to be able to use the extra points that will be available for the community development block grant?
Do you understand what I'm asking? I don't know what I'm asking.
Do, yeah, we're, so we're turning, they brought the phase where we're actually turning in the official application, so before it was just a letter of intent, and now we're turning in the full application. Um, this application did not ask about Main Street points, it was about opportunity zones, um, but there are other CDVG programs that would ask about Main Street.
But do you, but does the, does the application specifically allow you, allow the city to, use those extra points?
It's not in the application, so I don't know if they'll, like, look at that or not.
I guess I just want to encourage that it's stated, because you're, when are you submitting it, this week or tomorrow, or?
I guess as soon as Charlie signs it.
Okay. I just want to encourage the city to maybe call out the fact that the city is officially tomorrow, you know, designated, because even if the question wasn't on there, it may be something that is helpful, um, you know, in those, that extra point. So, that was one of the big things, I just wanted to make sure that, because the timing is wonderful.
Yeah, it is, it's great.
Yeah, I think we've got to make sure that we follow up on that before we submit it, just so we can make sure we're not missing an opportunity.
Anyone else like to comment? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to take a break. Well, Counselor Smith would like to vote on this, but she had to step out for just a quick second, she'll be right back. So we'll take a break.
There's this fly that keeps flying in front of my face, I'm not kidding. Okay. You can practice CDVG, CDVG, while you're waiting for it to come back.
Gives me the heebie-jeebie.
It just makes me. I know, I'm like, oh, people need to, CDVG.
We will bring the meeting back to order. Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move to, I would move to adopt a resolution to formally apply for and accept funds from the community enterprise.
We're back in order.
Order, order in the council chambers.
Move to adopt a resolution to formally apply for and accept funds from the community enterprise CDVG community development block grant program in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to establish a facade improvement program.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anamis. Item number twenty, executive session to discuss personal matters in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph six A, and before we vote, I would like to say, um, for the public, that we will not be voting on anything after the end of this executive session, so.
Move to go into executive session?
Second.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor? All those not in favor?